Good evening. I'd like to call this February 27th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Do I have a volunteer for the invocation tonight? I'll do it again if you want. Oh, go ahead. You're doing a good job, Ms. Chick. Okay, please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Sorry. Dear God, you are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together today. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals today. Amen.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Bellinger.
Here.
Docket. We'll come back. Selnuck.
Present.
Chockley.
Here.
Manley, here. Otto.
Here.
Chick.
Here.
Are you here, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Here.
Everyone's here and we have a quorum. Can I have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as presented? Motion by Chick.
I'll second.
Support by Manley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. Please feel free to come up, turn on the microphone, state your name and your address, and then you're free to share with us whatever's on your mind. Please try to keep it to three minutes or less, and welcome. Good evening.
Mary Devlin. 9211 Brookside Drive. My question tonight is, I know this is not a question and answer period, but maybe during board comments you might be able to answer some of my questions. My question is regarding the fire hall. In a memo from Kurt Weyland on April the 20th in 2013, there were several issues that needed to be addressed. Some of them, I believe, probably were, but I'm not for sure, and I'm wondering what was done and when it was done. And the things that weren't done, why wasn't it done? And, you know, there's, on his memo from April 2013, there's so many things there, and it's my understanding that right now that that building needs to be up to code even though they've changed rules and regulations, and I'm wondering if any of these problems, previous problems, are still the same problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin. Would anyone else like to come up at this time?
George Brown, 7868 Shady Beach. You know, there's a lot of talk now about 75 Barker, and I believe this is a board that will make things happen. I really believe it. Back in 2004, I tried to get things going. I felt, at that time, the building was a very valuable building for the township, and I still believe it is. There's still a lot of usage in it, but it's just been abused too long. And I feel that I got a feeling from this board that we're going to do something about it. We're just not going to lay it on the table and forget it for future years and so on like that. I got a very positive effect on it. Back in 2004, you know, I put together a, what it would cost to fix up that building and bring it up to standards and so on like that. And at that time, it was around $84,750 at that time. But even though some of the things had been fixed, I had the roof, the barrel roof, I had $23,750, and the roof for the office, it was $5,000, but those two have already been fixed and so on like that. There had been roofs put on it and so on like that. But there's handicap lifts, electrical, heating, air conditioning, wood reinforcement, everything on it at that time. And then I got the Washington County Historical Commission involved. They came out, took pictures of it, and they says, "Yes, that is a historical building. Maybe we can do something about it or like that." But, you know, so I had everything in place and everything, but I just didn't get the support I thought I needed because I couldn't do it all myself. But I needed a board like this here to say, "Okay, hey, we're going to put that building to use." Now, as far as that, as you know, the Quanis Club was using the old Flora shop, it was owned by Polly's Market for a couple of years now. Polly's Market went out beyond their duty to support us as far as the rummage sale. Well, that rummage sale proved to be a great thing that happened by our Quanis Club. So many service clubs nowadays, the biggest problem is getting projects, fundraising projects, to be able to put back to the community. Last week, Jerry Otto, Andy Lucatos, and I went to a service, a Quanis Club north of us. They're a nice little club and everything, but again, they have a problem making money to put back into the community for scholarships and leadership conferences and so on like that. So not only is Quanis suffering as far as that concern, it's other service organizations, how to make money and so on like that. I must say Margaret and Mary have been doing an outstanding job on running that rummage sale and so on like that. I'd like to see it continue because we did some good things for this community because, as you know, by our bylaws, 100% of the money we take in from the community got to go back to the community. Not a dime goes where it's well. How do you do, you make your administration fee? Well, we pay dues. You pay dues to volunteer? I said, "Yes, we do, and we enjoy doing it." Being a member now, past 45 years, now it's 46 years, you know, it's been, Quanis has been good to me. Made a good person out of me and so on like that, so, and I look, to keep our Quanis Club growing and by being able to have these fundraisers and so on to help our community would be, you could help out in that way. So I thank you very much for your interest in it, and if I can help in any ways to continue on to make this movement happen, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else like to speak to us at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we have the opportunity for Board Member Response. Do we have anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time? I will mention that we will look into your comments, Ms. Devlin, and see what has been done. And I appreciate everyone who's come out to speak to us. Okay, the next item on the, Mr. Docket, go ahead.
Spreadsheet. I was trying to think of what we needed.
A spreadsheet?
So we'll need that too.
Okay. Okay. He wants a spreadsheet of everything that was done, right?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about, I had a comment on the last meeting about the...
Oh, the employee handbook?
And I said normally we have our discussion on it, and usually, we've lately been having spreadsheets when we're going to do something.
Oh.
So that's what I was trying to think of at the last meeting.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add that on.
Okay, I'll see if I can provide what you need, Mr. Docket.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chick.
I just wanted to thank Mary and George for their comments tonight about the fire hall. You've been really good members of the community and volunteer and serve us well, so thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. Belliger.
Yeah, I do want to thank Quanis for their interest and for what they have doing in the community, and the 75 Barker is, it is a project that I would like this board to look into. So I think that is, I think it does have value, and I'm not sure exactly how and what, but perhaps we can come together and find what to do. Thank you.
Well, I might as well make my comment at this point too, since we're talking about 75 Barker. I was at the DDA meeting last night, and 75 Barker is of interest to the DDA seeing as it's right downtown and plays an important role in downtown as far as parking goes specifically. And the DDA made a motion last night to pay up to $2,000 for inspections of 75 Barker, hoping that this board will agree that that's a good use of money. It'd be $2,000 of DDA money. So they're going to get a quote for inspections and a quote for also demolition so that we know what we're dealing with, and they'll be able to provide information to the township Board of Trustees to be able to make decisions on the use of our funds to either improve it or other decisions on it into the future. So I hope the board would agree that that is a good thing for the DDA to be doing, but they would like to move ahead and actually provide that service to the board in the near future, so. Yes, you are. No, we're just getting quotes, just to provide information to the Board of Trustees. Oh, okay. There'll be another opportunity after, at the end. Thank you. All right, we'll move on now with the change of use rules and regulations, and we have...
We have correspondences, right?
Oh, did you have something? Yes, you're right, we do. Do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is going back to like, related to the smart meter issue and power cutoffs, shut offs. Due to improper power shut offs that people have had, if there's anyone who has had or knows anybody who had an improper power shut off in the last, I guess, year or so, an MPSC, which is Michigan Public Service Commission, pre-hearing conference is scheduled for 9:00 AM this Friday, March 2nd, before an administrative law judge at the commission's Lansing offices. The address for that is 7109 West Saginaw Highway. That's in Lansing, 7109. And the second, I guess, unrelated issue, maybe this should have been Board Member Comments. I would like to know if we could maybe get details regarding the source of the funds that were used in previous code enforcement to pay for previous code enforcement officers in the past. So we understand that everything was on the up and up, but I would like to perhaps get just where did the funds, what funds were used to pay for code enforcement in the recent past. Like to bring that up and maybe we can get that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belliger. All right. Oh, Ms. Otto, sure.
I just wanted to bring up the Whitmore Lake races. It's the 5K, 10K, 5K run and walk, and then the 10K run. And it will be benefiting the Fourth of July Parade and the Whitmore Lake Community Recreation Department. This will be on June 30th. It's a Saturday, and it, registration opens at 7:00 AM. So more to come on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, any more Board Member comments? No. Okay, we're moving on. Now we have the opportunity here for Mr. Kurt Weyland, who is our building official, and he has provided a memo for us. Would you like to, does anyone have questions about this item? This has been a topic that the board has been concerned about for some time, change of use and the costs associated with that, and the rules. So he provided this great memo, and we're going to have him come up and share with us your role and how you see change of use. Yes, give us an overview. Give us an overview. Yes, and the public will be interested too. Thank you. Could you hold it up to your mouth so that, okay, perfect.
So the change of use of a structure falls under the building code requirements. So the idea that we use a structure for a particular... Okay, okay, good. As long as you can hear, Mr. Docket. So the use of a structure, we'll start from the beginning. When a building is originally built, the architect or engineer, because it's a commercial building, has, is the one that's responsible for the design of the structure. They are the licensee who takes responsibility for that structure. That structure is identified, first of all, for its proposed use group. And the building code has charts and graphs and spreadsheets, if you like, spreadsheets, that show if we're going to build a bank and we want to have it built out of block, it then tells us you can build this building out of block for that use. You can build, say, two stories for 5,000 square feet per story. It limits the size of buildings for the use of the structure. And this is a life safety issue. It's, it limits the hazards. It limits the loss. It may tell us that if you want a building a certain size for a certain use, you have to fire suppression, or it tells us that we have to build it out of, you know, other materials. So everything is spelled out from the beginning for that particular use of the building. When we want to change that use, you basically have to back up and start from the beginning, and you plug in the new use into the parameters that are at the site, and then you have to figure out whether or not it meets the requirements or it doesn't. So the, each building, again, is specialized for the use. Sometimes you can build a building for multiple uses right from the beginning, but you would specify that upfront. So like in a shopping center, you can have a strip mall, and you could have an insurance agent in one spot, which would be a B use group under the building code. You could have a food store in another, which would be a mercantile. And the idea is that you can build that building as one building as long as the most restrictive requirements for the most hazardous use have been met. So, or you can build that building in multiple buildings and have firewalls. So when we get to the, excuse me, 75 Barker, we basically have one structure. There's no separation between one area to another. Now granted, it was built that way years ago, and it could be occupied for that same use to this day if the use doesn't change. Once the use changes, that forces us to go back and relook at the building for all requirements of the code. So I don't know, the idea that we want to make it a mercantile, and whether it's for one day a year or for 365 days a year, the same code requirements are required to get a certificate of occupancy. Now, there are certainly special parameters that other resources might be able to provide, such as a special use permit, that does not fall under the building code. Building code does not issue that because it is not, I've got a real dry mouth here, sorry. It is not something that the code, you know, gets involved with. Usually what we've done in City of Ypsilanti where we've had these things, it falls to the fire code. And it's usually a once in a lifetime event. There's special provisions, like when we had the freight house and they wanted to use it before it was certified. They'd have to provide fire watches, so they'd pay firefighters to sit there on duty while people are in the building, and other special things like that. But it's usually, you know, very, very restrictive. It's not a regular thing. It's a once in a long lifetime type of situation where you do that. So that's, you know, my job is to enforce the state building code. We don't write the code, and we are not allowed to make local amendments to the code. So it's relatively restrictive. And as far as the Board of Appeals go, Board of Appeals can only look at something that is equal or better to what the code provides. And that's the extent that they have the authority. So things are, things are pretty limited, and I know the idea and what you want to do there is a great cause. I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but we just need to provide for the health and safety of the public. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Docket.
So as long as it doesn't change, as long as it stays the same business, it can go on forever. Is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, one of its, but is like retail, is that, is that something, or is it more specific, you know?
Retail is a category in the building code. It's actually, they call it mercantile. Your zoning ordinance probably referred to it as retail.
You sell things, like a grocery store or whatever, clothing store?
Yes.
And as long as that doesn't change, it can keep operating unless you find some fire code problems or something like that?
Right, and usually...
So when it changes use, is the only time this happens? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Chick.
So it's been a long time since we, the township adopted the form-based code, which focuses more on the use as opposed to, the form of the building as opposed to the use. Does that not apply in this instance, or is it for new structures?
I wouldn't think it would apply, but...
This is, you're referring to your zoning ordinance? Yeah, the zoning ordinance has nothing to do with the building code requirements. This is all building code. I don't do zoning, so I...
Okay, Ms. Otto.
That's what I was going to state, that I think people are confusing the building code with the zoning ordinances, and they're two different things. Under the zoning ordinance, the township doesn't necessarily need to comply with its own ordinances as far as setbacks, change of use, that type of thing. And I got MTA to give me the...
They say we don't have to?
Well, if they're, and I talked to Brad about it too, but as far as the building code, which is a state-required code, we have to comply with it.
Good information.
But when you talk about the state, I mean, the zoning ordinances, you also have to look at if we're requiring another business in our community to comply with our ordinances, shouldn't the township also comply with their own ordinances?
Mr. Main, since you had a conversation with Ms. Otto, would you like to share the gist of that for the whole board?
Sure. I, trustee Otto basically expressed the whole of it, which is, you know, number one, there is a distinction, and Mr. Weyland gave it quite clearly, the zoning ordinance is a local ordinance adopted by the township. And as Mr. Weyland spelled out in his letter, the building code feels local because the local municipality has the ability to opt into enforcing it. But when you opt into enforcing it as a local municipality, it doesn't change the fact that it's a state law. So ultimately, even though we're the ones enforcing it, it's still a state law, so it takes precedence over our regulation as a local municipality. And then the only other issue was the question of, you know, there are some cases out there that imply that municipalities may not be required to comply with their own zoning ordinances. But when you don't, it creates a potential host of political issues that you're not, you're following one set of rules and asking everybody else to follow a different one, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Belliger.
I just want to make a note, so I think it is a little interesting, that the Michigan building codes are based on the international building codes. Thanks.
Ms. Selnuck.
So I have a few comments. One, I think we really need to get out to the public this distinction on our website. First of all, they, the public, we're learning, need to know that the building codes are state law. I think there is a misconception right now that it is local-driven, so I, we need to get that out. Also, you know, a distinction between the zoning ordinance and the building codes. I think that would be a good thing to have on our website, social media, because I actually learned quite a bit. So I appreciate having this on the agenda today. And I think there's been confusion amongst, maybe me, I will speak for myself as a board member, as well as the public. So I do think that needs to get out the best way we can do it. And then I do have a few questions just regarding 75 Barker. And as I will tell people, I'll disclose that I am a member of Quanis. So one is, I think in the report it mentioned something about the roof. I thought, and I know Mr. Brown came up and talked about it. I thought we did put a new roof, or I mean, not we, the township did, somewhere 2008, 2009?
I believe you are correct.
Okay. So maybe I misread that, so I think...
That report is prior to, that was the only time that I've walked through the place.
Okay, all right. So the roof looks good.
Put together a list of things that I saw at that time that appeared to need some help.
And then the next one I will recall and, or take on Mr. Docket's memory. I believe at the last board meeting, he had, Mr. Docket had indicated that he thought there was a firewall between the two buildings. So I don't know where we stand on that, but I do believe that was stated, so maybe that's something we can look at. And then the last one is the upstairs. So if Quanis was to use the downstairs only, do they have to do anything with the upstairs?
I would say only if the design professional sees a flaw that's a hazard that needs to be dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't hear you. What?
If the design professional finds a flaw in the building, you know, it's been a number of years now since they've been in there, it may have to be addressed in order for the safety of the people below. Yes?
Go ahead, Mr. Docket.
That does it. Thank you.
I'm trying to go by memory. I know, I know there's a, I know two people in this town right now that hauled the brick there to do, the block from, from the railroad up to there that, when they built the building. It, the fire hall part was built separately. A guy by the name of Amos was the fire chief years later, him and his wife. They built the house, the other part where the offices are, that was built separately. So I don't know how it couldn't be a fire hall, I mean, a firewall there, but...
But depending on what's behind the wall, you may or may not need a firewall. Because the firewall is separating space, and it's creating, a true firewall, under the definition of the code, is a wall that both sides of the building, one side can burn down and the other one will stay standing.
Yeah, I understand, but it was...
So there's a fire separation wall, and then there's a firewall. And the odds are, my understanding, if I remember right, is the second floor goes back beyond that wall, and then you exit out the back. So obviously, it doesn't go to the roof deck, but it's possible. There's certainly openings in it that would create a problem that could be dealt with.
The only thing I can think of is they built, they built in between the two buildings downstairs because it was two separate buildings.
Right, right. I agree, absolutely. And the house next door is also a concern.
It's what?
Is also a concern.
Yeah, it's only, it's only four or five feet.
Exactly. So normally, if you build that today, even if you could put the wall there, the wall can't have any openings in it unless it's fire rated, so.
So I'm seeing a lot of questions. Yeah, I do have a question about that firewall too. But it says that the building is not served by a fire suppression system. Is that something that's required in a retail situation?
Depends on the use.
Depends on the use.
And there's different classifications under retail. I would assume it probably wouldn't be needed, but obviously if you use, if you tried to use the upstairs for something else, or, there's certain parameters. And again, that would be what the design professional would go through and look at. They need to know what it is you want to use it for, and then they can figure out, plug it in to see how it fits.
Okay. And then it does, this one does say, this is dated 2011, and it says the roof needs to be replaced on the entire building. But Mr. Docket was, or was recalling it was replaced in 2008, or maybe you mentioned that it was 2008?
I think it was done after this.
After 2011?
Mr. Wagner was here, I believe, when it was done. And Mr. Wagner was here, I believe, when it was done.
I don't think so. It was around that time.
Okay. So we may have a new...
We, we should have the bill here.
Okay.
It, it really doesn't matter. I mean, if you go there and it's leaking, obviously you got a roof problem, so...
Well, I understand that, but, but I'm saying it was, it was redone and we painted it at the same time.
Okay. Well, there are still multiple glass window panes broken on the second floor. Yes, I, they sort of got patched up a little bit last year and they're still bad. And there, it says no insulation was found in the attic spaces and doubt that there's any in the walls. This has to be an expensive building to heat at this point.
My guess is, you know, the, the design professional will apply what they call the Michigan Rehabilitation Code for existing structures. And with this time to change of use, the odds are you'll have to bring it up to current energy code standards.
Okay.
So that's a, you know, that's a cost that you don't see it, you don't necessarily enjoy the outcome or get anything back from it, but it is something that I believe would be required.
Okay. So we, I guess we really do need to know kind of what condition it is in, and so I bring my comment back to the offer by the DDA to, to have an inspection done of that and to actually provide the Board of Trustees with some, some costs to improve it. So, Ms. Otto.
So usually, how long does the roof, does an actual roof last? They don't last 20 years, they don't last 15 years.
It can.
10.
I mean, that's not, that's not a real, it's not a real steep roof.
Right.
And I don't know if they replaced it, what they replaced it with. I mean, it's the barrel, so it's very shallow, I mean, but I don't think we saw any water when we walked around on the first floor the other day.
I didn't see any.
So...
No, but I think if you go to the upstairs, the ceiling is falling on the floor.
That's usually not a good sign.
Right. Right. I'm just saying.
I didn't go upstairs, so I...
So with your thought of the furnace, you said the furnace would have to be upgraded. That also means that the electrical would have to be upgraded, the plumbing would have to be upgraded.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, for a tear down and replace, let's go back to the ZBI. If we tore it down and replaced it, would we have to put it, could we put it in the same spot? Because now we have a variance issue, because there's no setbacks. There's no side yard setbacks.
That would be zoning.
I know.
And, and you can, the building code...
And I think we could replace it if it stayed exactly the way it is.
No.
You could not?
50% of the building is gone when you have to, it has to comply with current setbacks.
Okay. Then you have an issue with parking.
But we do have form-based code and we have the plan for the downtown with like zero setbacks from the sidewalk, for instance. I don't know about side yard setbacks, but the potential building envelope could be more generous than what we think.
I think you're only looking at 10 feet between the house and the building, if even that.
No, there's less than that.
Is it there less than that? Okay.
Again, I don't want to mix zoning with building.
I know, but...
And since I stepped out of zoning, I won't, I won't comment in that piece, but as far as the building code goes, you can certainly put it on the lot line. The wall would have to have the required ratings.
Okay.
And be built to code to comply with that. And if I can go back to the DDA's offer for the inspection, I'm a little leery of what they're thinking of as far as who's going to do the inspection. I think at this point, if the board decides that they want to pursue a certain avenue and use for the building, then the best thing to do is to contact the design professional and let them do the walkthrough. That's, that's where you're at.
I will let the DDA know that. So, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. So if you got somebody to go in there, an inspector, you talked about an inspector to go in and say, this, this, this is an issue, this has to be replaced, and then you have another element where you have to determine the cost of replacing it, that's not what the inspector does, you just, correct? Or is that the person you're talking about?
Here's, here's the scoop. Again, we're talking about a commercial building.
Right.
So we, the only person that's licensed to really look at that building is the design professional. Now, we have licensed trades that can look at individual pieces of equipment, but I think right now, you folks need to look at the big picture of what needs to be done to make that building go.
Okay.
And there's certainly, great opportunities for that building, some, you know, I think it has possibilities. I don't want to, you know, but like, similarly like the Freight House in Ypsilanti, I think it's taken us 10 years to get there, unfortunately, and a lot of grants and a lot of, you know, applications, and it's now open and we're thrilled to have it, but it's, it was a long haul, but it was well worth it. So this one certainly probably wouldn't cost the same, but...
And Ypsilanti put in a lot of money into the Freight House?
They did.
Yeah, they did. A lot of money. Okay.
Did they, did they own that at one time?
They own it today.
I know they own it today, but did they own it at the time that they did it, or did they win it in like taxes or something?
Yes. They owned it.
Okay.
And actually, the reason, they used to use it years ago.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, they used to actually use it for some fundraiser, and I was there for some political fundraiser thing, you know, long before it was ever approved or anything. And the insurance carrier actually pulled the insurance on it, and that's what forced another hand to bring it into compliance, so...
Any more questions here? Mr. Mainz, did you have anything you'd like to share with the board, or any questions of Mr. Wyland at this point?
I had talked with Mr. Wyland, and you had gone with me, the three of us had inspected it, but I haven't found anything that lets you not build it to meet current code since it's a change of use. Now, there are other properties that have retail use in the downtown that they could go into without that effect, but like Kurt's saying, once it changes use, then it triggers all kinds of things.
At least it looks like there might be needing an ADA-accessible restroom and potentially that, you know, ventilation and heating and cooling and all sorts of improvements that may be needed. The windows are broken. It's, you know, I don't, I don't know if it would be available for historic building grants, but, you know, something we could look into.
I don't have any knowledge on, on that portion.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any more questions. Ms. Bellinger.
I recall that the Quanis was considering a, some way maybe they could work out utilizing that structure and proceeds may, I may, maybe I'm speaking incorrectly, but I thought they'd mentioned proceeds to go towards the repair and improvement of the building. There's a, I don't know if it was something that I had heard is floating around as a possibility, that they had said they would like to commit to maybe doing if it was possible.
On behalf, I mean, we have members and we are discussion, discussing different options of, I think they presented that, maybe the township manager could give light on what the meetings that have been happening.
The latest meeting I had was last Friday, I believe, and, and then I was at Quanis meeting on Thursday night. But again, if you get into a change of use, the amount of money that would be involved in investing in it far exceeds any type of rent you would get off of it from anybody I know, including Quanis. You know, what Kurt has outlined is, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars. I've also pointed out before though, that my feeling is, as long as we own it, if it needs to be brought up to code and we, you decide as a board to do that, that should be at your expense, not at the tenant's expense.
Ms. Chick.
So, but before anybody could even move into that structure, it has to be brought up to code, so all the expense would be before you even got in the building, regardless of how you decided you wanted to raise funds, so...
That is correct, unless the fire department wants to back their trucks back in there.
Okay.
Unless the fire department wants to what?
If the fire department wants to move back in there, they certainly could.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Wyland. I appreciate your coming out and sharing with us, and we have a lot to think about the days ahead, I guess.
And you, my email and stuff is on, in the packet, I believe. Feel free to, you know, shoot me an email if you have questions come up. And the other folks I listed for you, they're, reached out to them and they all said, no problem, you have questions. You know, give them a call as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I just like, thank you, Kurt, for coming, Mr. Wyland. This was very informative. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
You, you just, you just fixed everything. The police, the fire department can move back there and then Quanis can move here, so...
Well, you may have other space to loan to them, that's up to you.
So, that's what happens when, when Chief Wagner...
All right. The next item on our agenda is First National Bank's security agreement. Ms. Selnuck, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the security agreement between First National Bank and Howe and Northfield Township as revised by our township attorneys.
Okay, I'll second that.
And I do have a few comments. One is, first, this is a renewal. It has been done in the past. I should have put this in my memo. I did not, but... And the, as mentioned in the page, it was to make sure they're in compliance to Public Act 20 as amended, and that's what our attorneys did. And they changed that a little bit from the last agreement that we signed. In addition to that, it indicates that it's for $4.5 million. And if you look at Attachment 1, right now, they actually have secured us for $4.8 million. I don't know what would happen if something were to happen. The reason we're, we've had, signed this in the past, and I'm requesting that we continue to sign it, is the bank we're doing, it's First National Bank of in Howe, is a very small bank. It has about a billion dollars in assets. As you know, we are in the process of moving to Huntington. They have about $124 billion in assets. So what they do is, on the security agreement, is they go and basically, in a lockbox, buy federally-backed securities, so that if something were to hap, happen to the bank, they would cash in those securities and reimburse us. Now, I do believe, and Mr. Mainz can talk a little bit, there could be, because it's in a lockbox, who owns it, that we don't want to see that happen, but this is added protection in case something were to happen. And so that, right now, as of January, we did have five, about 5.1 million. 855,000 was taxes, which is now going away, but they do secure it on a balance, they don't change the agreement every month based on our balances, they do it on a historical. And historically, we have had 4.5 million on an average in the bank.
Okay. Any questions? I don't have any questions. Mr. Mainz, did you want to share something about this?
I don't, I don't really have much of anything to add. It's a relatively minor revision. Previously, what First National had done is they had sort of itemized what is contained in the statute, but not exactly as it's contained in the statute. So the conversations that we had with Madam Treasurer was, it's best to have it direct to the statutes, that there's no question, they have to comply with the statute. Essentially, you make them your insurance agent for complying with the statute. They're required to comply with it by, by the contract. Also, what it does is, if the statute were to be amended to allow more things or to allow less things, the contract immediately then reflects that, because they have to comply with the statute regardless of what the statute says. So, but we would recommend the adoption.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger.
I just have a question of a possible typo. I cannot quite understand, on page number one, on the right-hand side of the, it would be the number, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh one down, where it says pledge The word even, maybe? Says means the pledger, fledgy, admits authorization of even date here with among, I'm not sure. I don't understand that. I'm just, I'm curious. I think that might be a typo, I don't know.
You're, you're referring to the even date piece? Even date just means the same date.
Okay, thank you.
There's a couple of their typos too, but they don't impact it at all.
I did actually ask Lenora about the difference I saw on that same page, the second paragraph down where it says deposit balance, about four and a half million being the maximum, but she's informed me that, that they're actually pledging to protect the 40, was it Yeah, the 4.8.
Does that need to be changed here? No?
Again, we, our monthly balance changes, this is based on our average monthly balance, so it's not like every month if we have 4.8 or 5.1, they're going to change it. They have made the contract based on an average monthly, monthly balance, which is, or else, which is, an average is 4.5 billion, million. Yeah, it would be nice to have billions, but it's a million.
Great. Is this the same as it's been in the prior contract then, or did this go up or down, this 4.5?
This has been the same for the last, probably, last contract for sure. Any contract that I have been on the board, it is the same amount. I don't know what happened before that, but I even believe before that, it was 4.5 million. Ever since, we've been at First National Bank of in Howe.
Does it be reasonable to ask for them to cover more, in case we do have the five at times? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking.
It's really driven by taxes, and our tax account will be done dispersing at the end of February, so I'd say no. And in addition, we're in the process of moving to Huntington. If we were not, I would look at our average balances over the year and see if that would be appropriate to keep it at 4.5 million.
Okay, thanks.
If there's no other questions, can we have a roll call vote, please? Chick.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Mamley, yes. Chockley?
Yes.
Delano?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 6-0. 6-1, sorry, 6-1.
If I may, I just want to, you know, Ms. Bellinger, and thank you for the questions. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the redevelopment-ready communities. And to get this going, I will make a motion, and I don't know what the resolution number is, I should have found out. Make a motion to, of Resolution 18-dash-whatever, Jennifer tells me it is, to authorizing Northfield Township to participate in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment-Ready Communities Program. Hell support? Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Chick.
Now discussion.
Okay, now we can have discussion, if anybody has questions. Ms. Otto.
So my first question on this is, after reading through this, there's a lot of work that the township has to do, and a lot of, it's going to take a lot of time, probably a lot of dollars, and it appears that the only thing that we're getting is one or the other, either $20,000 available to us in zoning ordinance improvements, or $25,000 for master plan development. Have we done an ROI on this? To find out how much money do we have to invest in time and, time and material, basically? Because there's things that they're requiring us to do.
We have not done an ROI.
What is our expense? What is our skin in the game in order to get the 20,000 or the 25,000 out of it? And I'm wondering is, it appears, just by some of what I've been reading, it's going to cost us more to do this than the 20 or the 25,000 that we would get out of this. We're not getting both. We're not getting 20 and 25,000.
We could.
That's not how I'm reading it. That's not how I'm reading it. It said or.
Oh, well.
It didn't say and, it said or.
I would like to do and/or in there then.
Okay. So to me, I would like to know what is the return on investment?
Okay. I guess I would like to describe the, well, I'll give Mr. Ains an opportunity to, to chime in on here. Also, we did go to this training together, and I'll let him speak, and then I'll fill in whatever is missing. Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
First, I appreciate the opportunity to have the training, and I'm looking forward to the second half of it. So I think the training itself was worthwhile. In addition, besides just the monetary amount, it's the fact that you get registered as a community, and then people who are looking to develop sites, put in new businesses or new industry, will often look at whether you have a pre-approved situation, so they know what they're getting into before they come to the community. And there are a number of times when we've been notified of potential opportunities, we haven't been able to take advantage of it because we're not registered. So that's the other side of it, besides the monetary. But we can do a cost analysis if the board would like.
Ms. Chick?
Oh, sorry, you wanted to piggyback on that. I'll wait till.
Yeah, I did, actually. We have been trying to become more business-friendly, to look at our processes and improve them for, for anyone who's coming and planning to site in the township. This program lays out a pathway for us to improve our processes, and if you look through the, the kind of evaluation criteria for what they look at, they'll look at our master plan, they look at our zoning ordinance, they look at what happens in our building department, they look at how well-trained our people are on our boards. It's important for us to put together a system that a developer coming in can rely on, they know what the outcome is going to be. Thank you. They know what the outcome is going to be. It's predictable. They're not going to have money hanging out there or waiting for, because time is money to them. We will be able to put together a process that they will be able to be comfortable with and rely on. This program, if you look on page, gosh, I didn't number my own pages. Oh, no. The certification for process, I didn't number my own, though. It's the certification process right after the conclusion of that first section. Oh, there's 20. Well, but this is different, sorry. It's the certification process. It's kind of right in the middle.
Just say after page 20.
Page 20, okay.
It's the next page.
Okay, certification process. It, it shows where we would get involved with the engagement. So we take a look at the, the best practices, which I gave you all a copy of. And then I contacted our specialist to find out how we get involved in the community, I mean, in the program. I attended both, two full-day sessions of training, and Mr. Ains attended the one through three with me, and hopefully he'll be in the next one relatively soon. I would encourage the rest of the board, even, you know, if and when we pass this resolution, I would encourage the rest of the board to attend, so that you understand well what kind of services the state will provide to us. But anyway, so I've completed that. We go through a self-evaluation, which actually takes a look at the individual components of how we serve our, the community as they come to us. So all the best practices, how we engage the public to get their input. We look at our zoning ordinance, we look at our master plan and how they work together, we look at how the DDA works, how the, and their TIF. And there's a great deal of technical assistance that the state provides free of charge in, in looking at our processes and recommending improvements. So all of this is on, on their website. We can get busy on a lot of this with, you know, prior to actually being formally engaged, but we would fill out the self-evaluation, and then we would adopt a resolution stating that we think this is valuable to us, and I hope you read carefully through that resolution. Then we submit it to the state, and we're put in the queue for this technical assistance. Once we're approved and they look through all of our materials and they provide us with feedback, we're eligible for a one-to-one match for improving our zoning ordinance and a one-to-one match for doing a master plan. Now, we have already set aside some funds for improving our zoning ordinance. It would be nice to have that match from the state to do an even better job of it or do more improvement. So it's, it's of value to us. The master plan, we put, I mean, this board did not vote to, to go ahead and take a look at our master plan, and I think the, the $25,000 would be really helpful. I think our process of involving the community is just critical, and if we don't do that, we're not, we're not involving our constituents like, like we should. One of my goals, running for office, was to improve our downtown and to get some economic development going. This could be extremely helpful for that. So it, it raises our profile. It puts us, it puts us on a better playing field for attracting development. We're going about doing this RFP for our downtown. Our processes is good as they could be to make sure that we're attracting someone to develop that, and I'm not sure that they are, but, but starting to, to get engaged in this community, I mean, in this program, will help us get there quicker. And yes, it will cost us a little money. It will cost us in time. I'm willing to sit down and, and go through the self-evaluation with Ms. Chick and Mr. Roman, and we can fill a lot of it out. Our staff can help us. Our building, building assistant can help us. I'm sure our building official can help us, and we won't have to necessarily go the next step to, to Mr. Lippens, our planning consultant, until we get stuck, you know. So a lot can be done. I did speak with our representative, who is Paula Holtz with the state, and she used to work for Tecumseh, and she did the self-evaluation, most of it herself, and then she talked to the planning consultant to finish it up, but now she works for the MEDC. But Tecumseh is in the program. Ypsilanti Township is a certified community. Pinckney is working on theirs. Howell, Celine, they're working on theirs. So the communities are finding value in it and they're working on it. A friend of mine in Grand Blank, they're, they've got a redevelopment-ready communities engagement also. So anywhere where there's an opportunity for redevelopment or development, it's just going to be helpful to us. We want to become more professional. This will help us. So that's, those are my comments. Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to comment that, reading through this, a lot of this we've already done. A lot of this is planning commission work, not necessarily board work. What we do have to do as a board, though, because we've been tasked with it, is our capital improvement plan.
Right.
Yeah, and that's going to take some time. So this isn't going to happen overnight, but I think the benefit that we gain from doing it, I think it's a win-win for the township. So I couldn't see any cons to it. I mean, I know there's some time involved, and time is money, but it might be worth it in the end, so.
I think so. Ms. Bellinger?
You know, a lot of people wonder, they talk about potholes, which we have plenty of. Schools never have enough money. Well, tax money, they're, this MEDC takes Michigan appropriations, tax money, and applies it towards this redevelopment-ready communities. So that's where some of our tax money isn't filling potholes and isn't going to the schools. It's being frittered on silly little bureaucracies. What I find very concerning about this, aside from that, is that this program is about tempting or coercing us to adjust and modify our master plan. That's our master plan. We don't, why are we going to take some hints and clues and notes and suggestions from, from this bureaucracy? I mean, is it, are we supposed to take and chase their offerings of grants from the, from this redevelopment-ready communities program to help us, to coerce us to modify our master plan? If you read through this, it is quite interesting. It's very, very interesting. They not only want to change the community, but they want to change the people that are in the community. And we talk about professionals. We are working towards a lot of the things, in a sense, the, the overall selling point is make it easier for developers, make it easier for business. We have professionals. We are currently working, as, as trustee Chick said. We have a management professional that is helping in this direction. We have a professional planners, McKenna. We have Vijaya in the office. She's professional. We have attorneys that are professionals. We're working with this RFP for the North Village with professionals. We are already putting a lot of energy and money into this in a roundabout way, as grassroots as we can. I want to also add that this board is being presented with a resolution. The resolution presented, it's a contract in a sense too, to allow budgetary resources of unspecified amounts to be used to support this redevelopment-ready communities program. I find this unacceptable. I believe this is just another web and overreach that we don't need. They may have some good suggestions in here, but as another member mentioned, this is going to take money and time. How many man-hours? It costs money to spend people's time to get, to commit to readiness by agreeing to undergo a rigorous assessment and work to achieve a set of criteria as described in this document. Now, if you look at the front of this document, I don't see Whitmore Lake here, and I don't think much of anybody in, in this room or in this township wants to see this be Whitmore Lake. Now, is there maybe some good ideas? Perhaps, but I do not want us to spend any more money and spin our wheels anymore on another bureaucracy and another, another way to reinforce this waste of taxpayer money through the carrot of grants. We'll offer you this money if you kiss our ring and you follow these particular criteria. I think this is poison. Thank you.
Can I just comment on the master plan? Okay, I've been through the master plan procedure once, a big one. Another one's coming up that we're hopefully going to be working on soon, but our master plan already contains much of what's in this. This isn't dictating to us what our master plan has to be. Our master plan is dictated by what the people want in the community, and that's how we created the last one. That's how we create, or review the next one. We're not going to create a new one. But I didn't get from reading the information that they're telling us how our master plan should read or what we need in it. We already know what we needed. We actually have a set of criteria that has to be included, so, and that's what's in here.
On page?
I just wanted to speak to the master plan.
Page eight. Page eight, the top one. It says you will have two or more of these, you will have two or more of these, you will do this or that, that thing and another. They're trying to dictate what our community should be about. That's.
But we do. It's, it's in our master plan.
We already do.
Yeah, we do.
Ms. Manley, did you have a question or?
Couple of things.
Okay.
Is at what point do we need the resolution? Is it to get started or is there a deadline?
We can turn in the resolution later. The thing is, we need to start working on the self-evaluation. You need to turn in the self-evaluation and the resolution. At the same time. So it, it doesn't hurt to put off the resolution until later, but we, but I would like approval for us to begin to work on this, and I am happy to put my time into it, and I, you know, I'm, I'm certain we will have at least Ms. Chick working on it, and it is not going to be difficult to get this done. It will take some time, but I think for the welfare, the benefit of the township, we need to get moving on this. Ms. Otto?
So I have a couple of questions. So when you say one-to-one match, do you mean?
One-to-one match.
If, if they provide us $20,000, we have to come up with $20,000?
Right, or we could say, we've only got $10,000 to do zoning ordinance amendments, and then we could get $10,000.
Okay, so I wanted to understand that there, that part, there is money involved and that wasn't spelled out.
Right.
You have some people that spoke two or three or four times. I have not been able to speak.
I'm sorry?
Oh, it's all, when she's through.
I didn't see your hand up, Mr. Dockett. I'll, I'll give, I'll give you an opportunity after Ms. Otto's finished.
Very good, thank you.
The one thing that I was, the one thing I was thinking about is, is if we could have an evaluation of this, is, because I'm hearing we've done a lot of this, but when I go through it, like Ton, I don't know what parts we have done and what parts we haven't done, and the parts that we need to do, I'd like to know, is there a cost to it? Because I see a lot of planning in, in this, and that means that our planning consultant will have to be involved in a lot of this, this development work. And so I want, I really would like to, before we do anything, is to evaluate it, is what have we done, what haven't we done, and is there a cost associated with what we haven't done, and what is that cost? I think it's, it's just smart planning on our part to determine, you know, can we do this? I don't want to sign something and then realize that we're not financially equipped to even do it.
There's no deadline for completing it, though.
Okay.
Once we get going, there's no deadline. This could, could go for five years and, you know, we can give quarterly. There's no deadline. So I think as a matter of our business model here at the, at the township, this could go on for five years. We could be engaged and, you know, just be working toward certification. Lots of communities are doing that. I need to get to Mr. Dockett here. Mr. Dockett, go ahead.
In regards to the redevelopment-ready community program, I do not think that the taxpayers and residents of Northfield Township will benefit from this, from another 20 pages of building and zoning and development regulations, and hundreds, according to what I'm reading, hundreds more rules and regulations and fees and expensive inspections that go along with what I'm seeing here. I wonder how much damage this board, if they pass this, will do to Northfield Township. If we vote for this, it's so restrictive. I, I can't understand it, why we do it. I got a feeling that the Northville neighbors are at work on this board, trying to make things so expensive and so complicated that nobody's going to want to build in Northfield Township. Thank you.
Ms. Manley?
My suggestion would be, you know, not sign any resolution right now. If we could start going through this, you know, yourself, Steven, you know, if Mr. Roman, I mean, people from the planning commission, the ZBA, might volunteer their time to help you, you know, to help complete this, and then see kind of what we're missing and what else we would really need to put into it, because I mean, a lot of the questions, you know, are pretty self-explanatory too. You know, do you have an annual training budget for elected officials? I mean, I think, I think you could probably fill out a lot of this and then maybe bring it back and say, this is what we're missing. This is who I need to speak with, and this is what it might cost.
Okay. And we don't have to have-
And then we know what we're getting into.
We don't have to have all the right answers, it doesn't have to be completed, and that's part of the evaluation. So, but that is, that is a good suggestion. It can, you know, we can take that route and do the resolution later.
Because I mean, like Jackie was saying, it's like, we can't really do a cost evaluation on it until we know what we're missing.
Right.
So-
Right.
Kind of got to start the process.
Okay. Do you have something, Ms. Solak?
Yeah, I, I kind of, I agree with Ms. Otto and Ms. Manley, is we need to see what we are missing and get a cost estimate of what needs, I mean, I read it, through it, it is extensive, and as Ms. Chick has indicated, it looks, you know, like we have the master plan, we have our zoning, from reading like there are page three in the overview, it seems like, you know, that they'll give us suggestions that we can or cannot do, and I think if we don't take them, we wouldn't be eligible for the RCC. That I'm unclear, but that's kind of what I took. And I think we, we need to just say, you know, what gaps do we need to fill in, and get an estimate of what we think that would cost, and, and maybe who would do it.
Would you like to explain now, RCC?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. It's the Redevelopment Ready Committee. Yes, thank you. So, I mean, I agree, it seems like it has potential, it could be overwhelming that we just need to get a cost on it, for what we think we need.
So, so would the, oh, Ms. Chick-
No, I just wanted to offer that I can take this, Mr. Roman, our Planning Commission Chair, he and I can go through it, because like I said, a lot of this we've already done, and I can bring it back and you can see where we're at, as far as what the ordinance is, yeah.
Maybe we can get a filled-out version of what we know. I don't, I'm not finding anything in here that I disagree with. We really do have to do a capital improvements plan, they ju, they just want to make sure that your community is doing what it needs to do to make development easy, and, you know, they want to know when your master plan was last updated. I asked her about that, and she said, and I told her the dates, and she said, well, you're better than a lot of communities, you know, when I said it, we had an amendment in 2014. So, she also said, though, as soon as we get this completed and we have our resolution, we're put in the queue for technical, the technical assistance, and when they have had an opportunity to evaluate this, then we would have an opportunity to have the match for improving our zoning and improving our master plan. I'm not, it, if Ms. Bellinger finds things in here that she disagrees with, I'd like to know, but I, it's intended to make it easier than less easy for development, it's from a developer's perspective, so it's, it's to simplify our ordinances, to provide a, gosh, what is, a spreadsheet that lets you know what uses are in which district. I mean, it goes through this all step-by-step.
Give it up!
I have, I have a presentation I can do, if the board would, would like to see that at some point, from when Mr. Ains and I attended, so there's, there's a lot of opportunity here.
Give it up!
So-
Yeah, intentions can lead to a lot of unexpected travels down roads that one does not see. We have a motion to adopt this resolution at this point, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, I can withdraw that if it's to the board's liking.
Well, we could vote it no at this point and bring it up at a future time.
Pardon?
We do have a-
It, I can, I can, I can make a motion to postpone to a future date.
So moved.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back at a future date.
I would also like, when we do bring it back, is to have some of the homework done.
Okay.
I'm sure you're not going to do a full cost analysis or anything, but at least come up with some estimates and stuff, so we have an understanding of what this is going to all entail, and knowing that this doesn't have to be done in, like, now, it can be done over time, it's something that can be planned for, then instead of us thinking that we have to do everything now.
No, we just, yeah, this, this is so we know where we're at. So, I hope you will consider in the future, but I, I'm going to start working on this right away with, with Ms. Chick and Mr. Roman, and get the information that I can from staff, and I've, I've spoken with Mr. Lippens, he would be happy to help us, obviously, fill this out. It has a lot of good information, so I think we'll be moving in the right direction as we look at this. Okay?
Do we have to have a vote in the table?
Okay, sure.
I mean, on the table, right?
We had to postpone, did a vote to table it?
No, it's, it was a-
Motion to postpone, sure.
Yeah, right, so we need to-
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll bring it, we'll bring something back at a future date.
Can I ask a quick question, because I noticed it in here?
Of me?
No, of Lenore.
Of Lenore, okay.
Do we accept credit card payments?
Yes.
We do.
Yes, we do.
How much are, how much fees do we pay?
I think it's 2.56 percent, and it, it's not that it comes to us, that is for the credit card service. It goes to them.
Oh, the other part goes to them, the seven or eight percent?
We don't collect anything.
It all goes to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it all goes to them.
We don't collect anything.
All goes to them.
It's, I believe it's 2.35, 2.56, but on sewer bills, it, it goes by value.
Okay.
So, it might be a dollar, depending on your sewer bill, but that is, we, we do not keep any of that, that is to have the service and for our customers.
They're changing the rate, right, right now.
They, they, it went up slightly, yes, that's correct, but that's all due to the credit card company.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't think the state is sinister, and I think this will be really helpful. Okay, next item. Oh, so, okay. This is a discussion of the sidewalk snow removal and ordinance, and this was suggested by Ms. Chick, but I'm sure Mr. Ains has some comments on it also, and I might, too, but we'll start, go ahead, Ms. Chick, if you'd like to-
No, yeah, I have no argument with the ordinance, absolutely, and I don't even think we need to change the ordinance. I think what I was wanting to suggest was that, in the instance where recently we had a huge amount of snow accumulated on the downtown streets, that it was a safety issue, that we might create a policy that at a certain point, when a, maybe a certain amount of inches accumulate, and it's difficult for the property owners to remove it, they have to attempt to move it, I hope, but that the township can, you know, help them out. We did it one time, it cost $1,000, and we hired a dump truck to haul it away. There's been some suggestions online on social media to dump it down at the community park and let people, the kids play on it, you know, for tobogganing and that kind of thing. I don't know if that presents a liability issue, but I would just think, I would like to see the board consider policy in the instances of huge snowfall, determined by the amount of inches, that we can pitch in a little bit and help them out when we can.
Okay. Ms. Otto?
So, if you look on page two, it's under D and E, it does talk about that the township can notify the owner to remove, and if they don't, the township can remove it at a cost to them, and if there's a hardship, the board can choose to authorize charges of removal. So, it's already written in here.
I agree, good point. And I would have to ask, what about my snow removal? It might get too, too much in my driveway. I would like mine removed, too.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Mr. Docket?
In the past, I got a ticket for snow removal, so they took a picture of it, and they showed it to me when I got back from Florida, and it showed from the senior center to Jennings Road. So, I come down with a ticket, and I said, well, where's the ticket that you gave the railroad track? The state of Michigan, they did not plow their part of the sidewalk, which they've got 100 foot in the right-of-way there. Well, we didn't give them a ticket. I said, well, where's the ticket that you gave to the drain commission, where are the crickies? By my house, it's 100 foot of right-of-way. Well, we didn't give them a ticket. So, I threw the ticket on the desk downstairs here, and I never heard about it again. So, if somebody gives me a ticket for snow, I want to make sure that they give everybody a ticket for snow, or else I'm going to raise hell on it. Thank you.
Okay.
Because I got a lotted ride, lotted sidewalk, and as soon as I clear it, the snowplow comes by at midnight, plows three foot on top of it, and it's frozen solid by morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solak.
And I agree, we have an ordinance, and we need to make sure we enforce it uniformly, and maybe, hopefully it wouldn't be too late, but our newsletter goes out for the December 1st taxes, we could certainly maybe mention something about that. I had thought potentially mailing something, so we would have to mail it to anybody that would, you know, I mean, technically, it would be sidewalks for property owners, I mean, homeowners as well, so, I just, again, whatever we do, we need to make sure it's uniformly enforced.
Is it only where we have sidewalks where the township has? There's lots of communities that, a lot of policy-
It's any sidewalk.
That don't have, huh?
Pardon me, what?
City, did you say?
It's any, any sidewalk.
Oh, any sidewalk.
So, that's what I mean, we'd have to make, you know, we have to make sure, you know, we're not just selectively enforcing it, it would have to be enforced uniformly, and our code enforcer can make sure that it's enforced, and if there's any complaints, that's followed up on, but it, okay. We don't want any incidents where, you know, Mr. Docket's getting a ticket and no one else is. Only if he's not complying and everybody else is complying.
Okay. Ms. Manley?
Um, I guess I agree that we should enforce it, I don't know if we have the manpower to enforce something like this, but to, I mean, I guess to kind of go with what Janet said, I mean, if we do have something that's, you know, some astronomical snowstorm, I guess this last one was bad, but it was gone in like three days, if we would have had that stay and another foot coming, then, you know, yeah, we can help out the downtown area, but I think it'd be a case-by-case basis, which is probably what happened last time, so, I mean-
You mean like an extreme?
Yeah, exactly.
Like the ones in 10 or 20-year blizzard or something?
Right, which is probably what that last one was, so.
Well, we got, what, nine, 10 inches, is that?
I think they had 11.
Right, and then when the snowplow came through, and then they plowed it onto the sidewalks, it was even higher for those people, so, I mean, it went over the flowerpots, so.
Somebody has to be designated, like probably Mr. Wagner.
Right, or the wastewater treatment plant.
We do have a challenge in that our code enforcement is only in on Mondays and Wednesdays right now, so if you get the snow on, you know, Wednesday night or something, it's not going to be in until Monday, so that's a challenge, but I think it's important that our business owners know what their obligation is down there, and that they need to be taking care of it. They can contract with J&amp;M, they can contract with any landscaper or anybody to come and plow their snow, you know, I'm sure high, some high school kids would love to do that, too, for a little extra money, so, you know, they can make those arrangements, and unfortunately, we have a lot of absent landlords, and so I think they don't understand what the situation is.
Right.
In, in a catastrophic situation where the snow might be way too high, we might want to designate a location for dumping extra snow if there's no space out there on Main Street, and, you know, so that's something that I think we could do, but-
You can't dump it by the, any lake or creek or water, because they don't, the salt will go, go in, you have to, you're right, you need, you need a specific, a place to put it.
Right, but where do you call, where do you stop, you know, once you, once you say, okay, it's Main Street, well, okay, what about Barker? We've got some businesses on Barker, and then it stretches there, and then it stretches down, how far down Main Street? We've got Harbor Cove down there, and it just keeps going, and pretty soon, you know, we're taking responsibility for something that the, the landowners should-
The township does Barker, the whole length, all the way to the school.
That, that's ours. So, if, if we had a catastrophic event, I suppose we could talk about it again in the future, but I would just like to make sure that the owners are aware of their obligations.
Sounds good.
Ms. Bellinger?
Since around the subject of sidewalks, I just was curious, does anybody here happen to know factually what the, what the non-motorized path is?
10 feet.
It is 10 feet. I wasn't sure if it was eight or what, but I see on page two, under standards, all sidewalks shall be at least five feet in width, wider walks to a maximum of eight feet. So, I find like that could be a little contradictory to our own ordinances. I was wondering, so I thought it was only eight feet, then somebody told me it was 10 feet, and I said, well, I happened to read, read this a couple nights ago, when looking through the packet, and I thought, well, this is curious, and that kind of goes right in hand-in-hand with the influence of grants and outside influence dictating changes that you make to your ordinances and your zoning and your master plan and such, it kind of dovetails right into that.
The, the standard for a non-motorized path is 10 feet. It used to be eight, and they made it wider because of ADA accessibility, is my understanding, that's why our non-motorized path is 10 feet. The original non-motorized path was eight feet, and then there was that change in between, so.
And isn't that why it's called a non-motorized path, path, instead of a sidewalk?
Yes.
That's the difference?
But even in here, it does say walkway, so it says wider, wider walks, it doesn't specify necessarily a sidewalk, but I thought that was curious.
Well, we have Mr. Wieland here, is there a standard in the building code for sidewalk widths? Mr. Wieland, do you know?
Should we do the bee consideration anyway?
Is it Wieland or Wieland?
Wieland.
Wieland, okay, thank you.
Turn on, yeah.
So, the building code is not going to address the sidewalks in the right-of-way necessarily, it's going to be an M dot usually requirement. Five foot is the minimum walk width, if we're looking at an accessible path or route, which can also go into the right-of-way, but the two kind of overlap, so five foot is the minimum.
Okay.
Now, exiting and that type of thing can go, go all the way down to three foot for residential and those types of things.
Okay, thank you. So, I did notice in here that, you know, we do have some sidewalks that are in need of attention, like the joints are buckled and, and there are some issues with some past inspections that needed to wait until the spring to be corrected, but the township, you know, does have the ability to, you know, to, to actually contract for those to be done, and let the property owners know that, that we could do that, and it would be an economy of scale for them if there's any sidewalks to be repaired. Otherwise, the property owners should get a notice and take care of that, so there's no trip hazards. We did have Mr. Rankin take care of some trip hazards in one of the subdivisions, which was helpful, because one woman hurt herself quite badly on a sidewalk, so.
That would be good to do, because that's, that's what most communities do, is they go, go and mark the sidewalks and give the property owner a chance to fix it on their own, or the, or the city or township fixes it and charges them pretty much the cost of it.
Right, right, and we had some problems also out at the fire station on North Territorial, we had some problems at the community center, and we had those recently fixed, and Mr. Wagner was extremely happy with the job that the company did in raising and leveling those pieces of concrete, so, you know, we're taking care of our issues, and I would hope that we can have our citizens take care of their issues, too, so.
Very good.
Anyway, do we need any more discussion on this item? No? Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next, we have office staffing, and this is, Mr. Ains is going to talk about- and this is, Mr. Ains is gonna talk about this with us.
And I got a question on that, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
Okay. This past week, we had the resignation of Krista, who works at the front desk. The board has talked before about possible reorganization of staff, and I could just go out and hire someone under the same conditions for the same position, et cetera. But I didn't know if the board wanted to look into this or have me look into it further before you had me just replace the employee. On the other hand, it puts a tremendous burden on the office staff that remain, and they're already overwrought, I think, with a lot of things. So I just didn't know which way you wanted to go with them.
Ms. Bellinger.
A couple things. I think we should immediately post for the position and get somebody in there. I think we, I guess we had to wait till the board meeting, but I would, I would think that should be something we should certainly do and advertise it, of course, on the website and get the word out. I also would like to add that I would like for all the board members to receive copies of resignations of individuals when they do provide them, if this is within the realm of legality, of course. I would think it would be since we basically hire. But I would like for all the board to get the copies of the resignation letters that are provided to the township. Thank you.
I would point out, when she resigned, I asked her for a letter of resignation so it'd be official, and she sent an email, so I can forward that to the board.
Ms. Chek.
I think when we were talking about reorganizing the staff downstairs, it was more about us making sure, not reassigning duties, because everybody's doing a little bit more than they're supposed to be doing, or shouldn't say supposed to be doing, than their typical job description. I think what we were wanting to do was make sure everybody's have, their job description is correct. And then we probably need, we do need to hire a full-time person at the front desk down there, because we can't put any more burden on the people that are there already. And we might even have to hire somebody else, maybe a part-time person to, if we want to start reorganizing duties.
Ms. Otto.
So I was wondering, do we ever do exit interviews for people who resign?
I did ask her to meet with me, but it didn't work out for her schedules. I did talk to her, though, briefly before she left when she came to pick up her belongings. She didn't volunteer reasons. She didn't indicate anything that was wrong here. But just the combination of work, family, et cetera, was to the point where she felt like she couldn't do everything.
Okay. So one of the things I think that we talked about is because didn't she do two jobs? Didn't she do part-time front desk, and she also did the building department as well? And I think that what we have been talking about is expanding the role of the building department. Maybe just getting a full-time person for downstairs and getting a part-time person for the building department. I'm just throwing that out there as a discussion point.
I think there, well, here, I want to let everybody else chime in here before I say anything. Well, Mr. Dockett will be next.
Okay.
As one board member, I would like to have a copy, not a memo, when an employee resigns. As a matter of fact, I think we should probably make a motion for that, because in the past, I have been able to have an exit. When, if they agreed to, I've always tried to do that. But when I look at this memo that I got, it's not the resignation, but it's a memo. And it says here, 4:55 PM. I guess that's when you sent it, or you printed it, or somebody printed it. And it's the same day they quit. So that means we didn't have any notice? Or did we have notice, and we weren't notified? How did this happen, is my question?
She sent an email the week before, was the way she notified me. She did not report to work that day.
She sent an email, but she didn't come to work, is it?
Not the day that she sent me the original email saying she was planning on resigning.
Oh, okay.
And then I emailed her back and asked her about getting me something formal in writing that she was resigning, because I think that's typical policy. And that's when she sent me another email that said her effective date. And that one was the same day I had asked for it.
Okay. Could I, so do you just have a, you don't have a resignation? You just have, what do you have? Well, I guess I'm asking, I'd like to have a copy of what you got in my mailbox. Would that be possible?
Certainly.
Okay. That's what, and I'd like to have a copy of the original one, whatever it was. Whether it's an email or a letter. And so, but I couldn't figure out. When I looked at it, it said Wednesday, 2/21/2008, 4:55. So I thought she worked all day, and I thought they went home at 4:30. But that's when you, that's when you did the memo, is that right?
Yes, she wasn't at work that day.
Okay. But, yeah, I'd like to have an exit meeting. I think we should vote on it, and we should be able to know this when somebody's quitting. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I did talk to her when she came to pick up her belongings. She wanted to do that after hours.
She was only here like, what, two weeks? I mean, about three, four, or five weeks, something like that.
I thought she started in the spring sometime before I started with the township.
Is that right? I'm sorry, I thought she just started.
No, six months or so.
Eight months.
Six, eight, yeah.
Thank you.
I was really sad to see her go, that's for sure. I really liked seeing her in the office. She always was busy and upbeat and helpful, and I thought she was a really good fit. So maybe something will change, maybe we'll see her again.
Ms. Elnuck, go ahead.
I agree, we need to get someone at the front desk. We were kind of talking in the office, and we think that in the present situation, it was maybe thirty percent is building, fifty percent is cash receiving, and then twenty percent is admin. It's kind of what numbers we were thinking about is, you know, talking with the deputy treasurer, the deputy clerk, as well as that's kind of what we thought in building. So I do think we need someone. And I think a long, maybe a short-term, long, short-term goal beyond hiring someone is to maybe reorganize. Mary working full-time on building, getting another assessor to have the help that Mary is currently doing as well as building and assessing. That might improve, you know, just the staff load as well as making sure we, yeah, the organization, thank you. And so on the, you know, with the split, you know, I think we, I was calculating, and it seems like maybe Krista Rollins, Rollins, was working thirty-two point five hours? Seems kind of...
Should've been less than that.
Yeah, I know that, but she started at ten and left at 4:30, right?
Every day?
Yeah, every day that I know of.
But she did have a lunch hour.
Yeah, okay, forget, okay, lunch. Okay, that must do it, so that must be the difference then. So thirty hours, so are, do we need a motion to say go out and hire a front desk person for part-time thirty hours a week, is it?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, does that make...
That's full-time then, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thirty-two is full-time.
I thought thirty-two, yeah, that, so that's...
I thought it was thirty-two. Excuse me!
We're open from eight to 4:30.
Guess that's what we need to decide.
Yeah, then we get into, you know, at that point, the benefits. And in the past, well, Krista came in and was working Monday through Friday. And before that, Jennifer's part-time. And so she takes Fridays off. And before that, we had someone coming Mondays, Tuesday through Friday.
Well, right, but we also need, it's a budgetary issue, too. So we need to take a look at...
I mean, I would go right now and try to get someone part-time, personally. And fill the position as it was filled, maybe that's the motion. You know, fill the front desk as it was presently filled.
Okay, so you're making that motion right now?
Yes, I am.
What is it?
I'd like to make a motion to hire a front desk person part-time to replace the, for thirty hours.
I'll support.
You got support all the place.
Okay, we'll do Bellinger. Okay, so to hire somebody for thirty hours. Okay, now we have a discussion, which I'd like to... Well, but I didn't get a chance to say anything.
Right.
Anyway, there, yes. There could be some potentially, well, if we're gonna reorganize job descriptions and move people from part-time to full-time or anything like that within the office, there are potentially some legal issues with doing that. And so I think Mr. Ains might have some insight from the labor attorney on that, that you could share with the board while we're discussing this. Is that true, Mr. Ains?
Well, I think the main thing is if you go from full-time or part-time to full-time, then it triggers all the benefits, like you say. And so it's a much more expensive proposition. It seems like you mainly have had part-time people in the office, not only in this position, but other ones. So I think you only have about four people there that are full-time now. So that was my main concern, is if you wanted to do something now, you could just fill it, like you said, at the thirty hours. But then if you want me to do something towards going ahead with changes, the normal time to do that would be with the budget, which would be presenting it for approval in June by the board to be effective July 1st. But it also gets involved with the potential changes in location offices. I have gone ahead with your approval and put the conference table back here, because we talked about putting it in. I thought you'd at least see what it looks like. There was talk then about taking the conference room and dividing it into two offices, or maybe more. There's also discussion as to whether to create the new office that was proposed back in 2006, that would be outside here on the second floor. You know, I've heard proposals about bringing the building department up to the second floor. If that happens, then there's a different flow of things where people can't replace or back up other people, because they're on two different levels. So there's just a host of issues that I think need to be looked at. But usually, when there's a change in personnel, that's one time you can do that without making a commitment. But you could certainly hire another part-time person to replace her. And if you decided future time to make it full-time, you could always offer the same person you hire the full-time position.
My understanding is that it triggers a whole new advertising for the position to keep us on, you know, legal grounds, so...
I don't understand that, because we don't do that at work.
You don't do that at work?
No.
It certainly have, a person would have a leg up on that. Is that true, Mr. Ains?
I'm not a labor and employment...
I know. I will ask Stacy about that again, but, you know, I understand that. And somebody who's here and has the ability to, you know, kind of be already broken in, would definitely be able to step in. My one, my thought is potentially consider a job share situation where we have some backup, you know? If we could have two people working the forty-hour a week, you know, like if there's any interest in that, that would give a backup person, you know, on other times that wouldn't obviously go to full-time, but it would give an opportunity for a day off once in a while. And it would cost us a little more, because it's more than thirty hours, but it's an idea. Ms. Manley.
I mean, I think we definitely need, you know, Krista replaced, and then possibly think about even another part-timer. If we have, if we have good candidates...
That's what I was gonna suggest, maybe another part-timer to help Mary and so forth.
Yeah, if we have two good candidates that apply, maybe bring it up at that point, and be like, "Okay, we have these two great people. Can we squeeze it in the budget somewhere, do something?" Mary definitely needs some load taken off of her.
That's what it seems.
She does. I know you had your hand up, did you say what you wanted to say?
My question was pretty much, is it something we could entertain is hiring two part-time people, somebody, you know, kind of like for the Krista and assistant Mary and other office work? That's what I was gonna, basically what trustee Manley just said, what Clerk Manley just said.
Okay, Mr. Dockett.
Oh, I'm prepared to be beat about the head and shoulders. Can we banish some department to the basement? We have a lot, we have a lot of room in the basement. Did anybody ever think of that?
Ms. Otto.
So in regards to legal issues, how we do it at work is you can, a person can go to part-time. They can, if they're part-time, if they're offered full-time, they can go to full-time. The only time you get into jeopardy is when you change their pay. You can't change their pay from one to another just because they went part-time or full-time. If they're an hourly person, say they get $10 an hour, just because you moved them to part-time, it doesn't change that $10 an hour. It's still the same, no matter if they're part-time or full-time. You can't force somebody, if they're full-time, to go to part-time. We have people that come to us and say, "We want to be part-time at this time, because things happen in their life." And we give them the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Well, we have hired Mr. Ains to, oh. We have hired Mr. Ains to kind of manage our staff, so... I'll trust his judgment as he moves forward and finds new people. But we do have a motion on the table.
Please remit the motion. Yep. Motion is to hire a part-time person at the front desk for thirty hours. However, we need to add the pay. That's the current motion, we might need a new one.
How much, how much money?
I, she was making fifteen dollars an hour.
Well, I think that should be part of the motion.
Yeah, I agree.
Add same pay to them?
Yeah. Same pay rate.
It was Bellinger.
Yeah. Do we want, so we have a motion, so at the same pay rate, I believe it was fifteen dollars an hour. Do we want to have a range of pay rates? No? Just fifteen dollars? As the same, okay, at the same pay rate, to start it. So let's do the same pay rate. Again, I believe it was fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay. And we have Mr. Wieland with his hand up here. Would the board like to entertain Mr. Wieland's comments?
Yeah, he's gotta come to the mic.
Okay, come on up to the mic, thank you. Since you're our contract, and you work with this position quite often.
It's not long.
Oh, turn it on, turn it.
The one thing, as you're building official, I do feel, you know, I put it in the memo, but I just want to stress the fact that you're all aware of it, that providing building inspection services is not something you have to do. So that in your long-term plans, you know, we came out here ten years ago, and this was a temporary type situation. So in your long-term plans, it is something that you don't necessarily have to bury them in the basement, but, you know, that, those duties can be turned over to the county. And you would not have any overhead costs or anything else. I mean, hopefully, your building department pays for itself anyways, so it shouldn't cost you anything, you know, out of pocket besides maybe some headache. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of your options.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wieland.
That should be looked into.
Yeah, it's right in Mr. Wieland's memo, where he talked about that, so, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have any more discussion?
Just one other thing. I do think the employee was an excellent employee, and I very much regretted that she decided to leave. But hopefully, we'll find somebody that's capable as well.
Are we gonna accept, are we gonna accept the resignation, or what?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on the motion.
Well, we usually accept the resignation.
Oh, we do accept the resignation. We don't have one in front of us. We're gonna, we're gonna do this one first, right? And when we hired Ms. Rollison, we did have a pay range, I think of twelve to fifteen dollars. And because she was... And because she was so qualified, we did, we did allow, you know, have, have her going at fifteen, so...
I'd say let's start, let's start at fifteen.
That's fine with me.
It, you know, that person has to multitask, and if we can get someone good at fifteen, that'll be good.
It's a tough job.
It is.
It's a tough job.
And don't, anyone, please take offense. It reminds me of the person at McDonald's taking those orders through the drive-thru, taking cash, making orders, answering, you know, she's, the person's answering phones and going to the counter, doing cashier, referring to building permits. I mean, it's, gotta be very good at multitasking, 'cause it's a very multitask. It's not one single task, it's multi, multitask.
Okey-dokey. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Dockett.
Yes.
Zellner.
Yes.
Chaklin.
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Check?
Yes. Okay. We will get another front desk clerk.
Should we then make a motion to accept the resignation? Even though we don't have it?
Go ahead.
In front of us? I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Rollins?
Regretfully.
Regretfully.
I support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger to accept the resignation of Ms. Rollison with regret. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. I don't know if we'll get her back, but anyway, okay. Thank you. Now we have the second call to the public. Would anyone like to come and speak at this time? Oh, okay, go ahead. I don't know, check. Nope, turn it on. Make sure it's really close to your mouth so that we can hear you. Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, my name's Bonnie Sexton. I'm here basically tonight to find out from my developer what is going on here in the township. Because we had a situation where we were getting some permits at the building downstairs. And there was a big deal about Lieutenant Green. There was a man that came in, I was, I was just introducing this master plumber. He just was signing in with the township so he could work here, you know? And he'd never been here before. And there was a gentleman that came in to pay his taxes, and he wanted to get, she says, "Do you want a receipt?" And he said, "Yes," because this, what's going on with the monies and everything in this township, he says, "I wanna prove I did it." Well, I have this man here in the meantime that's listening to all this. And over where the police are, there was a lady there. I didn't know her name at the day, but I do now. It was Sue Martin. She was listening, eavesdropping, basically, is what she was doing. And then she got mad and came out and started yelling at this man. "He doesn't know what he's talking about, and Lieutenant Green is a nice guy, and he's never done anything wrong." And then she turned around and said, "He's being investigated." So the man that I'm working for, he's wondering, I mean, it was a circus here that morning. It was embarrassing. It was humiliating. And this isn't the first time that I've brought a contractor to Northville Township and had this kind of problem, back in two thousand and six with this Larry guy over here and Pam. We had different problems with different contractors that came in. So I guess my, my basic, how together is everything here in this township and with the police department? Is, is he gonna have to worry that there's, like, somebody has to pay to have their sidewalk shoveled and somebody else doesn't, depending on who's their buddy or whatever, you know? What, what's the situation with Lieutenant Green?
What's your address, Ms. Sexton?
It is one four one zero Hilton Road.
Hilton?
Brighton.
Brighton.
Oh, okay. One four one zero Hilton Road, Brighton. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have anyone else who'd like to come up? Welcome.
Mary Devlin, nine two one one Brookside Drive. Regarding seventy-five Barker Road, if, in fact, you decide to go ahead and bring up the building to code and spend the money to do that, why can't you put that money that you spent, the amount that you spent, should you decide to sell that piece of property, include that in the, in the sale price? That's my thought, okay? And as far as the, another thing on snow removal. Some of the apartment complexes in this town, they hire their own people to come. The apartment complex that I live in, the management company hires the snow removal people to come. They do the parking lot, they shovel the walks, and they also salt, so we don't have a problem there. So I don't know if you're going to include all apartment complexes in your decision regarding snow removal or just the people downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time?
Okay, my name is Andy Locatis, and I live at nine two four nine Lakewood Drive. And I'd like to, some fast comments. These are just comments, okay? But dealing with this ninety, or seventy-five Barker. Up a little more, there you go, okay. And when we were talking about that particular building, I had the opportunity to walk through that building. And that's actually two separate buildings, meaning just the firehouse, in the sense that the second floor is separated by a vestibule. So when we're talking about having to do anything with that building, you can work the first floor, and then you can go back and do the second floor. And as far as the tiles coming down, I think it's more wind blowing around up there because it's so loose. I didn't see any real water damage. I didn't see any structural damage. I saw windows broken. I saw windows that certainly need to be replaced. But the, as far as the main floor is concerned, which is where Kiwanis would like to be able to put their store, a new bathroom definitely would need to be put in. The heating system can be revised. My understanding is that it's still a new, a relatively new furnace. I will go along with the fact that the ductwork has to be reworked. The electrical, I don't think there's a whole lot of electrical that, that, what's there certainly can be removed, and you can put all new stuff in, but that would have to be put in anyway, dealing with the usage of the building, 'cause you need, you need nice new ceiling lights. We need a suspended ceiling, which would then bring the ceiling down. And we don't have to worry about heating so much. Generally, you got all, you got room for that. As far as the walls are concerned, yes, all the walls are, there is no insulation on the walls. So you'd have to go around and you'd have to insulate the walls, either put a wood or metal studs up there. And so that, anyway, the second floor can be done at a separate time. That's the way I look at it. And having, the story that was told to me about that second floor was that graduation parties that were, that were, the classes graduated, Phil graduated from there, and that's sixty years or so back. His wedding reception was up there. It's a beautiful floor up there. You've got a stage. You've got one corner over there that was a dressing room that could, an elevator could be easily put in. The stairs are wide enough. They just have to be revised. The two big vents they put in there can be taken out because of the fire department. The bathrooms could be revised, the kitchen can be put in there, and of course, a fire escape would have to be put in. But that doesn't have to be done for somebody to be using the first floor. And anyway, those are my comments as to that building, as to the snow removal. You can have your twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, and you treat everybody the same. So the idea of the, of the railroad and the, whatever else that was that you were talking about, you just, you just clean it and you're building, and that's it. They pay the bill. If they don't pay the bill, they pay the fine. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
George Brown, seven eight six eight Shady Beach. Well, I wasn't gonna speak on the snow removal, but I, a few years back, there used to be a guy with a four-wheeler, used to go through town doing everything and so on like that, just removing all the snow for all the storefronts and all the way, all the way from, from the railroad track and so on like that. He did a good job. And when the morning club was alive, they made him an everyday hero. Thank him for doing that on his own and so on like that. In fact, they donated some money for his gas that he used and so on like that. I don't know if there's a problem with someone doing it, as far as a lawsuit, if someone gets out there and volunteers themselves and then somebody falls or so on like that. That's something I have to be looking, but the, you know, maybe you should look at volunteers and so on like that. I know if I had a four-wheeler, I'd be right out there. I got my tractor, but it's too wide. But the reason I come up here really, Kurt mentioned something about great opportunities. And by the way, when I call him, I can't say, "This is George," I say, "This is the mayor of Horseshoe Lake." "Oh, yes, I know who you are." And anyhow, he mentioned something about great, great opportunities. And I, I looked at Domino's. Now, did they say that is a great opportunity for them? You know, I hear they're putting in ninety, quarter of a million dollars into that building. So they must go to think they're get, not think, no, they're gonna get their money back from the sales they make from pizzas and so on like that. And I, one thing I'd like to know, see, I assume they had to have a use, a different usage 'cause it's going into a restaurant. I'd like to get a copy of that and get an idea what has to be done to change the usage and so on like that. So if I could come by and get a copy for that, I'd like it. But as I said, they made an investment. They made a big investment. And they're, they're not gonna make an investment in something they're gonna lose on. They're gonna make it 'cause they know they can make it here and so on like that. And that's the same way I feel about seventy-five Barker. You know, we make an investment. I think we, I know that we can, you know, bring this downtown area alive with us, 'cause we've had many people come in and say, "What a great store this is with," 'cause this is a time, a type of community that wants that kind of store. They're able to leave stuff off, and we're able to return it to them and so on. We've got a lot of newlyweds that come and just starting out. I remember when I first started building my house down here, I'm going down Main Street, and there's some carpeting there. I said, "Ooh," threw it in my truck and I put it in my house until I could afford it. So there's nothing wrong with that and so on like that, so... But as I said, I hear ten reasons or so on, negative reasons why we shouldn't and so on like that. But I'll tell you, I find one good reason that erases those negative reasons that's good for the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
I probably don't need it anyway.
My name is Margaret Ridell. I live at six five one four one West Eight Mile. I think that the township boards in the past let the fire hall deteriorate to the point it is. The Kiwanis group would like to try to put it back together for the people that live here. They paid for years and years and years on this building that went over budget. They paid to heat and cool this upstairs that was never used until now. And now we've got some people coming in, and we're gonna get some money. Well, you didn't spend the money on the fire hall back then because you were spending it on this building. So why can't you take some of the money that you're getting from this building, the rent, and fix the fire hall in partnership with Kiwanis? Okay, second thing, on this redevelopment-ready community thing. To me, it sounds like, yeah, they want money, and they want you to do, jump through their hoops, okay? But has anybody really talked to the people in this town? The people in this town that I've heard, they want that park down there to stay a park. And they really don't, they like their town the way it is. I don't live in town, okay? I'm here a lot. But just about everybody I talk to, they like their town. They don't want this huge thing that you people are trying to build, or some of you are. And that's just my comment on it. Maybe you ought to do a, a assessment of some sort and let the people speak. I think they did speak about the park, but we're putting development in there somehow. And I don't think anybody wanted that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Reese Warner. I own seventy-five fifty-one dollar road. I'm building it back to the way it was, and it's gonna be, remain that, that way. It's, the building was born in nineteen-ten, eighteen-seventy-five. It was a working farm, maintained its own, you know? It's already, it's still got all the, a lot of the fruit and stuff like that, and I'm gonna redo it like it is. I was told by Mary Bird that I couldn't have, that I had to have cows before I had fencing. When I told her I was gonna put up a fence, and it seemed, it's like then, and then she was all mean to us and stuff, and she wouldn't let us see our files, like I had to have an FOIA to see my files. I mean, how many people would have to have that, that own their own place, you know? And anyhow, that's, I got a lot to say, but I don't wanna say it all right now. But I would like to kinda like show you some, that, the way the road is coming down. Here's my septic and stuff like that. And this road comes all the way over to my side, and it's supposed to come in here in the middle.
Miss?
So it drifts inside. And, um...
What's that?
The road is infringing into the septic field?
Yeah, it's almost. It's coming right over there. It's like, it's not, it's a survey, and they're not in the middle of their survey.
What's your address again, Mr.?
Seventy-five fifty-one dollar road.
Seventy-five fifty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then they keep coming over and over, and then they say they own thirty more feet. And it's like, what? You know, stay within your survey. You know, that oak, that big old tree, if they're gonna take it down, well, I'll take it down and put it up in my house. You know, if you guys don't want that big old oak tree out there by the road, you know?
Jim McElroy's own?
Yeah, Jim McElroy, that, that's the way it looked when he had it. And I had to clean it up since then. You remember him, the one that owned the old Bastard Club across the thing that everybody drank at? Remember that? He owned, like, say, refrigeration, and I had to clean it all up. Everybody, my mom called me up crying, saying, "They're, they're gonna buy junkyard, junkyard." And finally, I just said, you know, "I'll come out here every weekend and come out here and clean it up."
Oh, yeah.
And I'd been doing it, and how come, you know, and that Larry guy comes up to me and goes, he goes yelling at me about the way this place looks. Well, I said, "You're the one that let it get this way." Ain't it? I mean, you know, it's all giving them tickets and letting them get away with that, and then I gotta clean it up? You know, it's like, I got the loan for it. I bought my sisters out. And it's really nobody's business like that, like, everybody's trying to put it out. And I've been called a lot of names before, and I'll tell you what. Now I'm called the road shrinker by the road people because I'm, I'm wanting my own property, and I want, I don't want them digging the things out and messing with my septic thing and trying to mess me up. They call me the road shrinker? Well, what are they, the road pirates? You know? This is kinda ridiculous. I don't wanna, 'cause I think you guys are on your way to doing something good, so I don't wanna say too much, but the pass board, you guys still gotta make amends for what they've done wrong, I would think. You know, I tried, I tried to talk to you, Doc, at Ames, and above, and nobody's wanting to hear the whole story. They're like, "Well, what can I do for you? What, what time is it?" You know, I talked to Wagner, and he's always looking at his watch, like, you know, somebody's telling him the answers on it, and then they're, they're wrong, and he gets thrown off. But he's really trying. He's really... he's really trying for this community. And, you know, as far as I, my, 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 I tried to tell you guys that my civil rights were violated by Green, Randy, Larry, and Pam. And they all got together and it's violation of my, a conspiracy of violation of my civil rights that has been continuing. And now I've seen a bunch of stuff that's in my files that's been forged, it looks like. I've seen things that, you know, and whoever wants to talk to me, so I don't have to talk about this every three minutes, every time we have a meeting. I'm glad to talk to them, but I haven't had anybody that's really wanted to spend their time.
Okay, let's, you know, let me check into what's going on with your situation, okay, Mr. Warner?
Okay.
Because I don't know if it's changed.
I'll get my anxiety up, I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's, you know, I know we spoke some time ago, I don't know what has changed since then, but, you know, but I'll find out what's been going on.
But not to let me have my files, I mean, remember you had it and you had the rubber band on it, on the one and you said, you said, "Well, you, you didn't want me to have it because..."
Oh, we can't give it to you.
"You didn't want me to get it out of file."
We could give you copies.
Out of, out of line, anyhow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you.
Do you want your map back?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll bring you some, some more so that you guys all know what's going on.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Board member comments at this time? We have anything? Mr. Docket.
Oh, yes, I'd like to have, tell people to buy and use local services in stores and to follow up on Domino's. Domino's will run Little Parky and, and Meccano's out of business. They'll lower their pizza prices until they're all closed up, then they'll start raising their price. So they will make out there in that building, thank you.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Belliger.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight and we enjoyed the comments. I would really like to see seventy-five Barker be restored if we can find a ways to make this happen and do it, you know, within the framework of legality and all that. I think that would be wonderful. And I wanna say ditto to Docket, please buy local goods and services. Thank you very much and have a wonderful week.
Did you have anything to share, Ms. Zellner?
Yes. I know the year and a half we've been here is that we are really working to make sure everything is enforced uniformly. I know code enforcement, we have the code enforcer and she's going out and doing it, zoning. I know as much as I am a member of Kiwanis, we wanna make sure we follow the township's rules and the township follows their rules and I think we're doing that. I know in treasury, we have unfortunately people that come and, you know, we, we have deadlines and we have to keep them because you give one, how can you not give the other? So we're very strict on our deadlines. And I think that's the way we're improving. I think, and I think having the zoning enforcer there one day a week is helping. I'm not the zoning, the zoning ordinance there, I think that's helping the township. I think we're, as we are learning as board members, we are seeking to make improvements. And I support doing something with seventy-five Barker. Again, as a member of Kiwanis, I think it would be great if somehow we could partnership with the township, so I'm kinda on both sides, but I think that would be a great thing if that can be worked out. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manley.
Again, just wanna say thanks to everybody coming out, making the comments and, you know, keep telling us, you know, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, because we don't know unless we hear that from people. And we're all available, our phone numbers, emails are online, feel free to call us, you know, get together with us and, you know, we take the criticism, you know, good or bad, so I hope we are moving in the right direction, so. And one question for Steve. Do you know when they're gonna start construction?
Well, actually, that's what I wanted to announce to the board, that you had authorized me to sign the lease agreement with LawNet and they convened their board meeting in this area today so that their board members could all see the area that was being discussed. And they did authorize this proceeding and they did sign the lease and they will be submitting their building plans in accordance with our requirements. And once that's completed and approved, they hope to be in by May first.
Great. Ms. Otto?
So I also, as a member of Kiwanis, I, I do feel that seventy-five Barker is a, is a Gemini community that has been overlooked for a long time. How we do it though is probably gonna be a lot of out of the box. We have to think out of the box of how we're going to approach it with the Kiwanis and the township. We do have a great committee that has been meeting with the township manager, so with both Lenore and I on the board, we have to just let that process work itself out. The other thing I wanted to say is I'm really proud of this board and moving forward with LawNet. One of my goals and had, being on a second term here was to make sure that we had the second floor developed, that somebody came in and rented it and that we were able to get income from it. So with that said, I'm very proud that this board has moved forward with that. And thank you for coming tonight.
Ms. Chief.
I just wanted to support Treasurer Zellner's comments about code enforcement and zoning ordinances and enforcing those. It's kind of a double-edged sword because we, when we do enforce them, we get people that are angry with us and want us to change the ordinances in, in our codes, but they're there for a reason. They're there not only to protect the township, but to protect the people, the safety of, not just the people that are questioning it, but the neighbors. And so, you know, we look at them, if there's consistent issues and things are brought to our attention by the people out there in the field that see things that could be corrected, but we have good ordinances and, and it's very important that we're enforcing them for everybody's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe we're moving forward. It's taken a little longer than, than I ever thought as we discuss things, but that's the, kind of the beauty of seven people looking out for the township. And so we all bring our different perspectives and I think we're stronger for it in the end and, and I think we are moving in a good direction of becoming more professional and we're, you know, we're taking advantage of, of the consultants that we have and the law, I mean, our attorneys, and I think we're gonna be in good shape coming into the future here, so. And thank you all for, for your comments and I know you're gonna stay engaged and appreciate you coming out tonight. So move to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, motion by Chalkley, support by Belliger, all in favor, oh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.